Hi everyone, welcome to the Tulsa World Opinion Video Podcast. I'm Jenny Graham, editorial editor.
Bobby Sett, editorial writer columnist.
And welcome. You know, it was a wild week, but when you break it down, really only four big things are happening. Oklahoma lost Panasonic to Kansas. The January sixth hearings. It's hot. And Tulsa Public Schools had a shameful sideshow of antics happening, which we'll talk about. So I thought we'd start with the first one there, Panasonic. So all kinds of theories about why do we lose this company to this whatever? Four billion dollar company or one billion dollar company to Kansas when we were giving them seven hundred million dollars. So what's your theory? Why did we lose Kansas?
I've got a few theories. For starters, the Kansas package was way bigger.
You know, it comes down to money. Yeah.
Yeah, we offered seven hundred and fifty million, somewhere around that area. It was over a billion offered by Kansas.
And so what is Kansas really? I mean, that's why it bothers me about these wars is that you end up maybe not making that much in the end.
Yeah, their incentives are pretty wild. I mean, there's all kinds of reimbursement for wages and this and that, stuff like that. It's like, wow, how do you, how do you recoup? How long does it take you to recoup any kind of money on this thing is, but you know, I understand though, I mean, you're trying to land a whale. You gotta, you gotta do that. So I mean, that was one of the things I saw that. I, I wonder if some of the local pushback in Mays County may have spooked them a little bit. And not saying that Kansas is any better in this front or any different on this front than we are. But there was a really interesting story in Friday's additions from some folks from the Tulsa Chamber saying that some of our, our laws that were these culture war laws that we've been passing lately are starting to scare people away. So.
That was a fascinating story this morning.
It was.
Uh, I would suggest people read it. Kevin Canfield wrote it and it, and it, it wasn't. The person giving the presentation, it was to the city council. It wasn't like taking a position necessarily, but they're hearing feedback from business leaders. Saying all these anti laws, anti abortion, anti trans, anti gay. I would put anti public schools in there. I mean, if you're a business wanting to come somewhere, you don't, you're like, how are the public schools? I don't want my employee employees to have to worry about. That. So you add all that in there and there's, the workforce people are hearing that from business leaders that it's making. A bit of a difference. I think the trends are still, they're still looking at data, but. And I would think that that would probably, if that is affecting business, it was, it's likely affecting things like higher education recruitment too. So.
Yes.
Yeah. So I found that interesting. I don't know if it's related. I mean, the Democrats obviously say that is why we love Panasonic. But I do think that the, the money has a probably more to do with it. So, but I also don't want Oklahoma to go into debt. Um, to get the whale. I mean, you don't wanna, you wanna benefit from these, not be on the hook and.
Yeah, you definitely wanna come out ahead and it's, it's good that you take. It's good to take a big swing at big things. It just depends on how much. I mean, are you gonna end up striking out in the long run because you maybe went too big and you didn't get quite the return on your investment?
You know, that, but that pushback was interesting because the pushback was about, not about the finances. The local pushback was about, we don't want these big companies coming in here and putting in their diversity, equity and inclusion policies.
Yeah.
And I, and that's where I think that chamber presentation was interesting. That they had no problem with the seven hundred million dollar incentives. It was, they didn't want to attract the kind of employees and that I think Oklahoma is really gonna have to reconcile. What kind of future do you want? So, you know.
Well, yeah, you know, there's, that's really an interesting thing that you talked about. The labor pool up in the area where they're building DeSoto, Kansas is actually pretty large. It's just outside of Kansas City. So there's a lot that they can draw from in terms of its proximity to Lawrence and the University of Kansas, plus Kansas City Metro and stuff like that. But if you go back to the Tesla thing. It really did boil down to, from what they were saying is we have to be able to convince our employees to move from California to city X. Is it gonna be a better sell in Tulsa? Nothing wrong with Tulsa, nothing, love Tulsa, love Oklahoma and all that stuff. Or is it an easier sell in a place like Austin? Which, you know, is an anomaly in Texas in terms of what that city is.
Right.
But Austin be, ended up being the easier sell.
Right.
And you know, that's stuff that we gotta consider.
Right. And, and we've had many higher education officials telling us that we are not graduating enough graduates. That there's a real issue of needing to up our college graduate is particularly in the IT. You know, computer, data, all of those kinds of areas, STEM areas in order to attract that. Because yes, you can move your employees here, but you also have to have a workforce to pull from. So yeah, that was an interesting point. So the other one, I was watching, I haven't watched completely the January sixth hearings because you know, have a life, gotta work.
Yeah.
But um, you know, they're long, but they've been fascinating. And we, we wrote, we wrote an editorial earlier. Encouraging people to watch because there was this immediate pushback of, I'm not even gonna bother.
Yeah.
Well, you shouldn't do that because what, what I have found, some of the takeaways I have found so far. Um, and what I was really fascinated this past week are just how many Trump insiders are testifying.
Yeah.
Are not in any sort of way liberals or even rhinos. I mean, these were Trump through and through. And I mean, his daughter, his, you know, there, there are people who were in the room. And that Rudy Giuliani, Bill Barr, I mean, these are not, you know, and. And so that's what I've been fascinated by, but also just what we're learning is concerning. I mean, yes, there's tantrums and the complete denial. And, and to me, that's a test of character. I mean, it's easy to, to, to look good when you win, but if. A person, when you're facing loss and disappointment and how you act, that's the mark of a character, that your character. But even with that, it's the, um, sort of the window. I got to see through it on the kind of coordination between these extremist groups. And in this case with, you know, some Trump officials that knew these insurrections were coming, that they'd be armed. I mean, there is, and the coordination among the extremist groups. That we've been warned about for years. I mean, going back to Timothy, Timothy McVeigh, the domestic terrorism is a much bigger threat for us. And this really hammered that home and hearings are still going on. But, but we're seeing that that coordination is happening. It's a groundswell on the dark web and all this stuff. But people are knowing how to tap into it. That's the scary part, weaponizing that. So have you, what are the takeaways for you so far?
Um, similar to what you were saying. Uh, one thing that people were saying is, well, there's so many Democrats and just two Republicans on the panel. Well, I mean, the two Republicans. It's not like they're, they're rhinos by the classic definition of what a rhino is. I mean, Kinzinger and Shaney are very conservative, socially, financially. Defense, all that kind of stuff that these guys are about as, these two people are about as. Hardcore conservative Republicans as you can get. The vast majority of the people who have testified, like you said, have been Republicans. They've been people who voted for Trump twice. Some of them are his campaign officials. Some people are folks who are in the White House and other people outside in the administration cabinet officials. So this is, it's not like you're just bringing in, you know, a bunch of like occupied Democrats people to say, oh, this is what we heard or saw. And that's not the case here. These are people who have been in some cases. Involved in the party for a long time, decades, true, committed to the cause, conservative Republicans. And they're testifying what they saw. So I think I'd like to kind of throw away the whole thing of saying it's just a big liberal witch hunt because come on. Who's doing the talking here?
Exactly. So of our delegation, most of them said they're just not gonna consider it except for was a.
Lucas said he would watch. Frank Lucas said he would pay attention and watch. Uh, a few of them have been pretty quiet. Mark Wayne Mullin is like, no way, no how. And Langford was something along that line, maybe not quite as. Hard line is, is what Mullen was saying, but yeah, I mean, they're just. Uh, Stephanie Bice had what she had to say before the hearing started, saying it was just some kind of a. Show trial or something like that. And that kind of misunderstands what this is. It's not a trial. It's a presentation of information. The best analogy I could come up with is this is a lot like a grand jury proceeding. To where the grand jury is the people who are watching this. Whether you're in the room or whether you're watching it on TV or whatever. We're being presented information. And of course, part of that clientele or part of that audience is gonna be the Justice Department. Because they've been moving, I'd say, just to be nice cautiously, all of this stuff.
Yeah.
Um, but now this stuff is all out there and. You know, you had the guy from Twitter saying, you know, I think we just let the views of a bomb that's gonna go off, you know, hope and nobody dies. I mean, Twitter is, people on Twitter are thinking that, you know, between that and what Mark Meadows was said to have. Said in the room, uh, some of the other people, there was an expectation of violence. But this was, you know, a multi-pronged effort to overturn the election. And they basically got shut down on everything else. So this was the last.
Right. Legally, there was no other, I mean.
Yeah.
Joe Biden won. Sixty four and everything. And so the last straw was violence to take it by.
Send a bunch of people up there, stop the proceedings with as much violence as was needed. Delay it somehow. Unfold that in a way that could send it back to the states or whatever. And that's. What it's getting at is how high up the chain does this go? And piece by piece, they're saying, it, it looks like they're saying it goes all the way to the top. And we're gonna find out, yeah, we're gonna find out more. I think next Thursday.
People should watch it and come up with their own takeaways. That's what we're.
For sure.
These are our takeaways. I hope others do. So Bob, it's hot outside. And I kinda wanna blame the meteorologist and I know that makes no sense. It's like blaming the messenger. But I swear every time James Adalot puts up that forecast in the morning, I'm like, ugh, James. And his dad jokes make up for it though. So, uh, but yeah, we're looking at a hundred and seven temperatures next week, next week.
Yeah.
You write about how hot it is.
I did.
Where you're at.
That's where I'm at, man. I was, uh.
You drove down to Texas and back.
Oh my gosh. Well, the weird thing is I drove down, the first day I went down to San Antonio, it was actually hotter here in Tulsa than it was in San Antonio. Go figure. But people have been talking about how meteorologists have been talking about how this summer is setting up a lot like twenty eleven was. And twenty twelve after that was almost as bad. If you remember how hot those days were, just. Days and days and days of what we're seeing forecast for us, temperatures in the hundreds, maybe starting to approach. You know, one ten. I don't think anyone's predicted one ten, but I've seen a one oh seven in there.
Yeah.
So we're just in this weather pattern that is gonna be pretty ugly. So when you have stuff like this or a big hurricane or unexpectedly strong tornado outbreak in the wrong kind of season. People start talking about climate change. I would say when you look at something, you gotta, you can't blame like one weather event. On climate change necessarily off the bat. But what you can do is look at trends. Trends tell you what, weather trends tell you what's happening in a climate. And that does tell a different picture. It does tell us that, you know, the West is drying up and becoming more fire prone, drought prone. All that kind of stuff. Uh, there are areas in the world right now that are. May in the near future, twenty, thirty years might become pretty much unlivable.
That was fascinating to me that there's some areas in the world that have been populated that you look at, they're turning into Death Valley, I think is what you said and.
Yeah, um, so Death Valley regularly hits temperatures, summertime temperatures between a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty-five degrees. The capital of India, which is no small city, is a very large city. It's not a desert in the middle of nowhere where nobody lives. There's, you know, thirty million people living there, something crazy like that. They hit a hundred and twenty degrees during a heat wave in, I think, May. And when you looked at that whole region there in the Persian Gulf and in the Arabian Sea and stuff like that. It's getting rough. It's getting bad in a lot of those places and your body just can't handle it. Power grids can't keep.
And the power grid can't handle it. So.
Just like Texas power grid can't handle a heat wave.
Exactly. Yeah. Dallas now is warning, been warned that there may be rolling blackouts. And, and actually in Oklahoma, there are some parts that are starting to water ration, certain rural water routes. They're, they're starting to ration. So, so yeah, so you take that on. But what I got. In the middle of, not in the middle of, but I was sort of, I went to the board meeting. So Tulsa Public Schools. Had a, uh, I don't know how to describe it. It's just, it was just this roller coaster this past week and it started with. Um, a regular board meeting where you pass consent items and consent items are everything from, they're usually non-controversial items. Uh, paying the utility bills, the, the hiring of new people, uh, renewing contracts of things like. Reading partners and academic programs and things like that, like state grants, accepting officially accepting the state grant into the budget to expend it. So there was, there are seven members, one was absent. So there are six left. Three. Halted the, the passage of the, the consent agenda. They also simultaneously halted the process to issue the bond issue. Like the taxpayer approved bond issues.
Stuff that we voted for.
Right, that we voted for. And that bond issue is not overseen by the administration. Two decades ago, there was a committee system set up. There's a citizen committee set up that they both. Uh, and one committee kind of helps determine future bonds. One committee oversees the current bonds. All of the bids that, you know, basically you're taking a loan out to do projects. So those bids for that money are sealed. No one knows who they come from. So, and the rules, the instructions are, we take the lowest bid. This is all not new, but they halted that because the winning bid was Bank of Oklahoma, which is this big major bank. But the superintendent's husband works in the bank, therefore they just didn't wanna pass it. So it was this whole.
Yeah.
And all of this stuff could have been dealt with before the meeting. And then on the consent agenda, they blocked the whole thing. I mean, they blocked hiring, it was just. And then the bad part, I mean, that was bad enough. But then when the superintendent said, here's the consequences of what's gonna happen. We can't pay our utility bills. We're not gonna be able to hire these people. They're gonna leave for other districts. Those three members, and I will name them, Janetti Marshall, Jerry Griffin, who's running for city council. And Elena Ashley, who at that point had attended five meetings because she was just elected in April, walked out, got up, walked out. Didn't wanna hear it. And then Janetti told another board member to shut up. I was like, what is this? And so then, of course, the reaction was pretty swift. But I went to the board meeting, they called a, another board meeting, special board meeting to try to salvage this and they did. But what got me was there's been this growing group that are attending all the board meetings. And there, and I called them the anti-public ed group. They will say, we're just holding people accountable, but they're not. Because they're not providing any solutions. They're not providing any sort of, they have, they don't have kids in school. Some of them don't even live in the district because I. Know who some of them are. And they're just, they're just there to cause chaos. And I think that emboldens maybe some of the board members who have personal grudges or beefs or whatever. That they're, they're getting cheered, actually cheered by this group and they're growing in the audience. This is the same group that last month booed a middle school girl who got up in front of the board and wanted to talk about LGBT. LGBTQ experiences in schools. If you are a grown person booing a twelve or thirteen year old. And you feel like you, and one woman yesterday was shouting to the point where they ejected her. I'm like, what are you doing? You've gotta really, if you're ejected from a Tulsa board meeting because you're shouting. You've gotta rethink the decisions you made in your life to that point. That's, that's not helping. And that's not being a public school advocate or trying to hold people accountable. That's being disruptive. And so that's what I wrote about Sunday. I want the school board to be functional. I want, I want to ask hard questions, but I also want them to do their jobs because behind this. Are the questions they're asking, I know they know the answers. And some of it, they can pack it ten days before.
Yep.
Some of that background information, they're, they're just playing gotcha. They can ask that before. They can get. All that. And so it's clear that a couple of them, they're shown up to the meeting, they're looking at it and, oh, I got some questions. Well. You were elected to, to have those questions before. So, but you know, part of it, and Bob, you've covered a lot of, of public board meetings. Through this whole thing this past week, I've realized how many people don't understand how public boards work.
Yeah.
And that's.
Including apparently one of our school board members, but anyway, go on.
No, no, I was just, I mean, that's, it comes up every once in a while that people, and especially in the Twitterverse, they wanna throw out. And especially with, they wanted to blame Deb Gist for this. I'm like, she doesn't control the board. The board president says, I mean, well, she, Deb Gist could have done, I'm like, no. It's, it's very frustrating that people want to assign blame elsewhere. They don't understand how it works. And, and I don't know what the answer to that is. I mean, have you, is this something new, Bob? I mean, I, in my time, thirty years of covering public boards, I've never seen a consent agenda not passed.
Yeah, that's, that's extremely rare. I, I haven't seen anything like that since the days that I was covering the Moore City Council.
Have you ever seen a member's walk out before?
I'm not gonna say yes, but I think I've seen something akin to that where. Things were just so tense and so divided and, you know, people were being obstinate just to be obstinate that they just did.
They just took a break or something.
Silly things. They did silly things and stuff like that.
You know, it's interesting, there was right after that, I stayed till like six thirty last night. What's interesting is. When like that contentious part ended and they ended up passing it, not without, I mean, Elena Ashley voted no on a lot of things, including. Continuing the Chinese program at Booker T. Washington because apparently she was concerned that Communist China was involved with indoctrinating. Kids at Booker T.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, it was, it was interesting. She is gonna be an interesting member, but.
I would like to get a message out to her about that particular thing.
That was a weird, out of nowhere.
This, this is me speaking to Elaine Ashley. China is going to be a competitor, a rival and possibly a foe for years to come. We need people to understand China, to understand the language. It is important that we have people educated in how to speak and read Chinese. Anyway, go ahead.
Well, and also, well, in this contract is held by a nonprofit in Texas and has been since eighty-nine. Which again, was information that was provided, but you know, but this, it's just, um. Yeah, I just, I, I just looked at some of the people in the crowd. Now I will say last. The crowd yesterday, there were a lot more teachers and advocates and people to sort of balance that. Because one thing people don't see is this growing sort of angry kind of group. I don't know what else to call them. They're not. Helpful. But, and I think that that crowd seeing that there were other people out there sort of helped the, the board stay on track. That they, you know, that the tolerance for that kind of grandstanding and theatrics wasn't really going to be accepted yesterday like it was on Monday. So I do hope, if, if anything, if this wakes people up to caring more about how the school board operates. How people are, how their board representatives are voting, then that's a good thing. But what's interesting is once all that, once those items passed, they went into sort of a retreat where they were, they've been working on. Trying to build a better board, communication and they. And then they got into data. People always talk about, we want that data, what are the outcomes? Well, once that started, that crowd left. They were like. Boring, looking at, and you know, for most of the, the board members, they're really into it because you, in order to. To be effective in a district like Tulsa, which is really complex. You have, I mean, you have to really kind of dive down to figure out what's behind some of these scores and they were looking at pandemic response. And I just thought at one point there were seven people, including two of us, Lindsay Crable, who's Burton, who's in the, uh. Uh, news side and myself. And I'm like, yeah, this is pretty much it. They like the chaos. But oh, oh, the part of actually doing the job, well, that's over out. So, and I, that's what I wanna get past. I wanna get past the. That, that chaos, that there, I'm just convinced there are some people and some groups out there that they just like the fight. They don't like the solution part. That's where I'm coming down in this day and age with politics. There's just some people who like the fight.
Some people wanna watch the world burn and I'm not going to directly accuse these people of being that. Cause that's a, assuming quite a bit. But sometimes I actually speak louder than words. And I mean, if you're just there because. You know, in some ways like TPS and Deborah Gist have become targets.
Had, in some ways, oh, they have. I missed the meeting on it, but they have.
Political campaigns well beyond Tulsa Public Schools and the school board. They've become a lightning rod. So it's, it's kind of funny how you've got people who are not connected to TPS. But are high profile folks coming after TPS, coming after Dr. Guest. And all of a sudden, this. Astraturth army of people, some within the district, some without, outside the district. Here they come, converging on the school board to create chaos and.
Yeah, and they're shouting.
Down a kid and shouting down school board members and administrators and stuff like that. It's like, really? I mean, can we be grownups?
No, no, they can say, I, I've even advocated, there's a, the, uh, the conservative legislature. Uh, wanted, they passed a bill to make, to make it illegal to like interrupt at local board meetings. So you could actually have them arrested. I'm like, I think they should do that. Get a couple of rests under your belt for, you know, interrupting. And it was based on, it was funny, it was based on. You know, civil rights and liberal activists interrupting. And so, hey, it's good to do, but they did eject.
If you fit.
Yeah, Mike, no, it goes both ways. But that's the, uh, yeah, it was a, a very sad. Display, but I hope that they kind of get back to just doing the business they were elected to do. But I do hope more people who really care about public schools pay more attention. And I, you know, going back to your point, uh, you know, they're not from the district or they're not, they don't have kids in school. And there is a legit argument of if you're a taxpayer, you have an investment in the schools and I agree and you wanna see outcomes. But the problem is even those who are living in the district that are sitting in and causing these problems, they haven't been in a school. Like they're making assumptions like we're teaching third graders, uh, you know, sing, about same sex marriage. I'm like, no, no, they really aren't. They, we're not teaching third, you know, whatever, reading. I'm like, no, they are teaching multiplication skills.
They have to.
Teaching these things. I mean, there are a lot of assumptions going on that are not true. And so that's the frustration with what I'm seeing with this group is yes, I agree. I think everyone in Tulsa should care about their schools, whether you have kids there or not. But, but do a little homework to know what's actually going on in a classroom. So.
Yeah.
That's what I'll leave with. So, um, other than that. I'm gonna take a break from social media because I'm spending way too much time arguing with, uh, anonymous accounts that are pointless. That's my, that's gonna be like a, a resolution. Do not engage with anonymous accounts. And if you get your information from anonymous accounts, stop it. Cause it, talk to people, know who you're talking to. So anyway.
Using an avatar that's not their picture.
Then they're not, yeah, it's easy to throw out criticisms and barbs and lies and distortions when it's not your, you know, you're not held accountable. So, but anyway, uh, I'm gonna stay inside. I'm gonna go get my daughter from camp this weekend. I've seen her in two weeks. I'm, I kinda miss her now. And, uh, she's been outside in the nature for two weeks. I'm gonna hose her off before she walks into the, you know. House.
In, in the nature.
Get a, I'm gonna get a day of beauty for my teenage girl to.
That's hilarious.
Get her back in shape. But, uh, other than that, I'm just gonna take it easy. What about you?
Probably the same. Um, the heat is kind of a burden, I guess, but you know, whatever. And I'm gonna watch the, uh, one thing I may watch from social media is the fireworks gun that maybe begin to go off. Down the road in Oklahoma City as they consider building a new arena.
Oh.
For their basketball team.
Woo, that'll be fun.
Oklahoma City.
It is nice when, when the problems are in your backyard. It's like, oh wait.
Welcome to Arena Roulette where Kansas City, Seattle and other mid-sized. Welcome to Arena Roulette where Kansas City, Seattle and other mid-sized markets are greedily watching what happens.
Yeah, that'll be interesting. You know, it really is kind of bad with being so hot is that in order to like get any kind of walk. Or exercising outside, you gotta wake up at like five thirty in the morning.
Or suffer.
Huh?
For.
Oh, yeah, I'm not suffering. No, I'm not doing that. But I went out, a couple of times, I went out to La Fortune and I had, I got up at like five thirty, six in the morning. And it's, it was packed. It was so funny. You see all these people that are thinking the same way. I go, who would have thought a six thirty in the morning walk? Would have this many people. I'm like, oh, yeah, we're all trying to avoid the hundred and five degree heat, so.
It's, it's funny you mention that because like on Tuesday, I've got this run group that I go with out of Turkey Mountain. And it was a, it was a nice seasonal ninety-two degrees outside. This is all right. Ninety-two felt okay. Whatever, man, whatever.
Well, just a few months, we'll be talking about how cold it is, so. Anyway, and I will say, because I mentioned James Ade a lot, but we have an excellent meteorologist on staff, Kirsten Lang. She writes two columns a week. And she's writing about climate change and all the issues, so I wanna give her a mention too that we have a great meteorologist. Who was once on television here, so.
You gotta get her on the podcast sometime.
I know, we should, we should get, yeah, exactly. So anyway, everyone, have a good weekend.
See you later.